Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the committee, the whole budget meeting for August the 20th, 2024. Before we begin this, we want to add to the agenda, the interlocal agreement. And Beth, would you please come up and explain?
Absolutely. Last night, the council took action on ordinance 43 2024, which was a grant ordinance allowing the city of Richmond to apply to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation for a $60,000 grant to continue our Make My Move program. The interlocal agreement that you have before you tonight, which is 144 2024, is an interlocal agreement between Wayne County government and the city of Richmond. The match that is going into this program is being 100% funded by Wayne County government, so this document memorializes that, that they will be paying that money to us so that we can then contract with Make My Move to continue the program.
We discussed this last night at our meeting. Is there any questions at this time, Beth?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, second, to approve. All in total, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll send it around, and everybody needs to sign how they voted, and on the back of the paper, there's another place where you just sign. Thank you.
Thanks.
And now, back to the budget.
Back to the budget. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming on tonight. Yes. Thank you for coming on tonight. Thank you for having the audience. Good to have you. For the first time in three years, the council has been presented a budget where the general fund ends in a black instead of in the red, even with a 4% pay increase for civilian employees, employees not represented by their collective bargaining contract. There is one department within the general fund that will need the council's special attention tonight, and we have to counsel on how to respond. But I'm incredibly proud of the work our administration has done in its first seven months. There is a lot more work to do, so we'll get started with comments from the controller.
Thank you, Mayor, council, department head, and the city staff for your time and contributions to the development of the 2025 proposed budget for the city of Richmond. For 2025, the Indiana State Budget Agency calculated the maximum levy growth quotient for property tax levies at 4%. As you are aware, this growth has been limited in 2025 by House Enrolled Act 1499-2023, which limits the growth for all cities and towns to 4% during this budget year. This factor is applied to the previous year's property tax revenue for each fund to estimate that revenue source for the coming year. Other tax revenues are also based on that factor in varying percentages. The increase in the property tax revenue denotes a corresponding increase in circuit breaker or property tax cap loss that we calculate at the same rate. The total estimated circuit breaker loss for 2025 is $10,574,632. There will be a slight increase to our health insurance at 0.5%, as well as a 10.4% increase to dental, but no increase to vision. These rates are driven by the overall increases in planning costs and claims. We continue to work with the insurance committee to potentially make changes that could lessen the cost for both the city and city employees. The 2025 budget reflects a 4% pay increase to our civilian employees, as well as support the pay increases to cover those negotiated in collective bargaining agreements for union employees. I am happy to answer any questions you may have before we get started. If there are any questions, I am unable to address specifically this evening. I will ensure to follow up after the meeting or at the meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this time for the control?
Mr.?
Mr. Engel.
I'll be chairman tonight. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Did you say a 4% increase for all employees not covered under?
Yes.
A union?
Yes.
And the insurance increase is around 4%?
No, our insurance increase is 0.5%.
Thank you.
Which is a half percent.
Yes.
I always had a...
That always surprises me, too, every time I look at it.
Yeah, I always had a disagreement with that because I think it should be a zero there, but for some reason, with the newer math, they go this way. Any additional questions for the controller at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ron, you said for the first time in three years, this budget is in the black, in the property tax fund?
In the general fund, things we can't control, yes.
Is it budget, is it balanced? Is this a balanced budget?
Yes, and it can be more balanced depending on what you do with the last funding here tonight. I'll leave that to council. We'll talk about that when we get there. I don't want to tie it up now. We'll get there later.
Additional questions? One of the things I would like to suggest, and I talked to almost everybody here tonight, I think, that when we come to the personal services, which is wages and overtime, social security, Medicare, instead of going through each one of these individually, if we could just go by the total amount, and then if we have any specific questions, we can ask them, and then you'll have our other supplies and other services. You can go down there line by line if you desire. Anything that you have a question for, please come, ask me, and we will answer that question to the best of our abilities. With that, let's start off with clerk.
I really don't have much to say. Can you hear me? It's a very small budget. I think it's next to the smallest in the city. If you've got questions, just ask me, because I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
If we have any questions at all for the clerk regarding the supplies and services...
It's so complicated.
Pardon me?
This budget is so complicated. No, it isn't.
You got any file cabinets in there?
No, that's this year. Justin said okay.
It was a hard decision.
It was very hard, though. He didn't even increase our budget. It's just moving around.
Any questions whatsoever?
Just, if you look at the insurance, that was confusing to me the first couple of years I worked here, that they've got all this money in the insurance, but I guess they have to fund for three people in my office just in case something would happen and they need to be covered. There are two of us now that are covered by Medicare and not insurance, so there's only one, so there's kind of a savings there that I think is pretty substantial.
That's good. Thank you.
And that's it.
So, any questions? We'll move on to the council budget, and Karen's going to give the council budget, because she and I worked on that together.
It's even more complicated.
Yeah.
It's actually quite simple if you just want to look at it and ask questions.
Well, news, we cut budget, and it's less than it has been in the last year. If there's any questions, Karen or I get one, we'll be glad to answer them.
If you look at training, I know that last year, we had an issue with not having enough money in it for everybody's training, so we had to kind of fudge that, but in three years, we'll have more money put in that for new counselors. Does that make sense? We'll plan for that a little bit better.
Cut travel out.
Unless they go to a meeting, and then what? Mileage.
Any questions regarding council's budget?
They should all be this easy.
Thank you. Don't think they'll be that way.
I don't either.
Mr. Attorney.
Sure, why not?
It's just as easy.
Yeah, it is.
Probably just as easy.
Also, very straightforward and simplistic. We're just asking to build in the 4% increase that the controller talked about. Also note that my contract, as I did last year, allows for me to get into the city's health insurance plan if that would become necessary. I don't need that because my wife teaches. In the interest of full candor, I lose less and less confidence in that longevity the more she talks to me about that job, but she does. I think, continue to enjoy it while my children are young. So, this year, I don't anticipate needing that, so you should build the savings there. Otherwise, my budget is what you see before you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's hard to argue with a budget that you've reduced well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just a question that I think I've asked you before about this. I assumed that you had a given amount of billable hours, which we went above that, that that was billable, and you've told me that is not the case. Have you ever broken down the hours that you work for the city and what that is opposed your normal hourly rate?
The former mayor and controller asked me to do that last year, so I did, based on the actual hours that were billed. I can't remember what that translated to in terms of dollars and cents off the top of my head, but it was considerably more than the retainer and something that we certainly couldn't support in our budget.
How much, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
How much are we saving on the budget by you opting not to have the insurance?
I would need to defer to the controller, but I would expect in $30,000 plus range. Is that...
It's about $16,000.
Or the six...
Yeah, because of the way that we budget over every eligible position, that spreads the cost out, but it protects us. So, if the person in the position this year takes, waives the insurance and doesn't have coverage, and then they quit in August, and we hire somebody in September that has the full family covered on Plan A, it helps level that cost out. So, we budget, it's around $16,260, I think, somewhere in there, per person that's eligible to be on the plan.
So, we hope your wife continues to teach.
I mixed two of us, supposed to park her.
Thank you. Tracy?
Okay, finance budget. Of course, we have the 4% increase. There was a few increases that I have in our budget for supplies and other services. Supplies are basically just our everyday supplies that we use if costs have gone up, as you all know. Other services, the bigger one is probably going to be our contractual services, which is with Baker Tilly. We expect an increase for 2025. We're not exactly sure how much it's going to be at this point, but we're looking at going from $48,000 to $55,000, and that's an annual fee. Our travel has increased from one person that we were sending to the BSNA annual conference to two people. I'd like my staff to be a little more informed on the software that we use and some of the things that are available that we're not using, I want them to be able to access. For example, our purchasing module has a bidding module in with it. We have not utilized that yet, but we are looking into it. So, that's one of the things I want to be able to send the staff for training. Also, we have a slight increase in contractual printing. Those are for our year-end forms, 1099s, the forms, the envelopes, all of those things that we use across end-of-year information. Other than that, everything, training, slightly higher. Again, that's because the BSNA training cost has increased. I also have added $2,000 to our computer equipment. We are currently down two laptops, and that is to replace the two that are rapidly dying a horrendous death. Of course, revenue, that has, most of it has went up slightly because of revenue taxes and stuff, and of course, the offset on that is our circuit breaker. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Tracy, I know we've chatted about this before, but as it relates to, like, you brought up the example of the two computers, and I think it's more of a purchasing question, but to be able to get a contract and purchase large amounts for the city...
Right.
Are you still wanting or working towards that?
That is something we'd have to discuss with our IT director, because they are essentially the ones that makes the purchase themselves, and of course, that would go through purchasing in a bidding process for that many laptops if they choose to do that. I'm not sure how many laptops are required for 2025 or may be estimated to be required. Just for my department, it's two, and this is, I've been here five years, and this is the first time we've had to purchase since I started, because I started and purchased two, and we're just now purchasing two more in five years. So, I don't know what the, how the rest of the city uses their laptops and what their time period is, or what that looks like. That would have to come from my team.
I think a program like that would probably have some considerable savings.
Okay. That is something we can certainly look into.
Any additional questions? I have one.
Yes, sir.
On the contractual services, if I'm reading this correctly, it's $55,000, is that correct?
Yes.
And year-to-date, we've only spent $2,700?
Yes, because our contract will come towards the end of the year.
And how much will it be?
Right now, I think it's right at 40... Beth, do you remember how much it is?
I think it's 48.
I think it's 48, how?
So, we will run the answer?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions? Move him right along. Board of Works, that's yours, too, Tracy.
Are you skipping me?
Pardon me?
No, you skipped one. Health insurance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the health.
See, he sits on the committee now, and he just doesn't have any questions. He knows you all.
Well, we're under budget, so I wasn't worried.
Exactly.
Okay, go right ahead. I'm sorry. On health insurance.
So, we have only minor changes in the 2025 budget due to a fairly quiet year. We are seeing the benefits of the planned changes that we have been implementing, and year-to-date claims are below expected amounts. We are anticipating, as Tracy told us, a half percent increase for '25 due mostly to the stock loss premiums, increasing by an anticipated 29%, but the brokers are currently working very diligently to bring that percentage back down to the average 15% that we see. We are expecting a 10.4% increase in dental premiums due to claims experience, so they, we've had a little bit more expenses there, so they're going to increase that as insurance does for fully funded. We anticipate a reduction in the prescription benefits cost due to higher negotiated rebates. So, we very recently did a bid with Anthem, and part of that kind of forced UMR and Optum to renegotiate what we get with them, and we're getting more free funds back, which means less cost in prescriptions. Medical claims are expecting a slight decrease. We currently have 700 bodies, or belly buttons, as I like to say, covered on the plan, 289 employees, 78 retirees, and 333 dependents. Any questions?
Questions at this time? How much under budget are we right now?
We, year-to-date, I think we are at 97%. I don't know the dollar amount, so I just can't remember. It's the percentage.
It's just slightly under budget.
I was just so overwhelmed, because when we got July's numbers, we ran at 76% of anticipated, which is keeping our year at, like, I think it was 87.
So, probably 30% under this year and next year budget.
But the important part is, so far this year, we've been under budget, I believe, each month?
We've had one month, and we're trying at 128%, and we do typically anticipate higher claims the closer we get to the end of the year, because everybody's method deductible, they're rushing to get all those year-end things in, and while it'll be covered more. So, that's just a standard increase that we expect. So, if we can keep all these earlier months low like we have, we're doing good.
This budget predicts a 1% increase in union cash balance next year.
Okay. Any questions? Jane, do you have any comments here on the committee?
No, I'm really excited about some of the changes they've made, and it looks like that they're lowering the cost, and it's awesome.
Thank you very much. Board of Works, Tracy?
Board of Works, there's really not a whole lot to talk about. The increases that you see are over the property and liability, lights, utilities, stormwater, normal, average going up. And then, let's see, there's nothing really outstanding except for telephone and fax sim. Apparently, there was, in 2024, there was a nice big typo. It was entered in at $95,000 and should have been $9,500. So, you will see a big decrease on that particular line, and that is one. So, we fixed it, and like I said, there's really nothing outstanding to note. If you have any questions, please let me know.
That was the $85,500?
Yes, it was.
That's a good cut.
Yes, that was a typo.
Yeah. Shame you couldn't have done it for all of them.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah, the big increase is electric on the lights, so that's, we started $1,000, but that was to be expected.
Very done. Move on to human resources. Good night, everyone.
Good evening. So, the HR budget for 2025, my goal is just kind of to give you guys a clear picture of where we made some cuts and look at where, an area that I identified as an area that we needed to increase, like, our investment in terms of HR support. So, we'll start with where we trimmed numbers. After looking at the expenses, I did about a few areas where we can make reductions without impacting any sort of operations. So, for example, we decreased the need for postage, copier charges, and legal publications. I found that these line items simply, they hadn't been very active for our office, so it made sense to kind of reduce the budget in those areas. And as I look back, I could really see where we've used them, at least in the last, I don't know, six to 12 months, so. I also kept the unemployment compensation line as is. In 2023, they encountered kind of some unusual cases that continued to play out into this year, yet we're set to receive, like, account credits for some of the ones that were mischarged, and so we'll get money back on that. With our strong performance management practice that I plan on being able to usher in a little more and implement more, I just anticipate that we'll have fewer claims in terms of what's going to be compensated moving forward. So, I kept that line item at $10,000. In the other areas, they just, like, the travel subscription dues and training administrative expenses have kept them the same, just because I anticipate us being able to participate in, like, programs, like, train-the-trainer type programs for Casey and myself, and as well as our own professional development and being able to go to conferences and things of that nature. I just think it's kind of crucial for us to be able to invest a little bit so that we can be able to bring back great things for the city. As far as budget increases, the, probably, you've probably noticed, the biggest increase is the new HR technology that, anticipating the new software, it's going to improve just everything for the city with regard to how the employees are managed. It will also serve as like an employee internet, so it'll be a central hub for our employees where they can access important information, like our policies, as well as they'll get, be able to access the benefit links and training resources. That's one thing that's really significant, that we'll be able to, you know, send out training and have those things completed. It's just going to be a way to really streamline across all the departments, just a central place for the employees to be able to find information. While it is an increase to the budget, I think it'll pay off in the long run in terms of efficiency, because it is and will be reducing the manual processes in our office, as well as, like, data management. We were able to have everything at our fingertips in that regard. As far as, I just think it's going to help us overall. And we're working on right now, we have been working with it in our department, the company's been helping us with implementation, so that Casey and I and Michael, we understand all of the moving parts of it. It's a lot to learn when you go from not having really a system to then having something that can manage your employees' performance, as well as training, and that keeps logs and able to, just, it's going to make auditing so much easier for us and the things of that nature. So, I feel really good about the budget, and I hope that people are willing to support it for the HR department in terms of having that line item increased there. So, are there any questions?
Questions? I have a couple. When you, when we get a rebate back from the unemployment compensation, where does that money go? Does that go back to the general fund, or where does it go?
It goes back into the fund it came out.
So, we use that then to make the payments?
Yes.
For the next year?
Yes, sir.
And the other question I have was, is this property liability claims, is that the one that's $15,000? Am I reading the right line? 3408?
Is that property liability claims? Yeah, I, that is claims, and that's in part because our deductible was at, it was at $1,000 per claim, and it went up to, like, $2,500 per claim, and so what we had in there at $2,000, we didn't even handle one claim. And right now, our deduction, our deductibles, we cover that for every, most of the departments that are in this city building with regard to that in terms of property claims, so it increased because our deductible increased.
So, you handle that for all the departments?
Not all the, not the larger departments, just the smaller departments, like my finance, IT, you know, the ones in this building. I think code enforcement, maybe, and I'll look to you. Tracy can help me on that with what I have to...
I'll have to look at your, I'd have to make up. I think it's in code enforcement, they got their own.
Yeah, well, but there's several small ones that are within that that covers, and the $2,000 wouldn't cover one. The other aspect of it is even if it's, like, one claim could be up to you with seven grand because it's the at-will part of it, too. So, we don't see a whole lot of them, but $2,000 doesn't work.
Okay. If I'm reading this right, so far this year, you've got $7,535 in claims, and those are 15.
Yeah, and I have the look and see, and I don't have it with me exactly where those came from, but they, they're going to be smaller departments within the city.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, we're pointing it out.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need to see if you're a little wide longer, I mean, because I have already, not just operated, but property liability and the, yeah. Am I not covering also those? Okay.
Yeah, we've done, we're doing property and liability first, and then...
Okay. So, the anticipated increases for, like, property and liability insurance, and as well as workers' comp, well, are just kind of, our brokers have told us a cost of war to expect about a 15%, increase in the insurance premiums.
15% increase in what?
The 15% increase overall. Like, last year, they estimated 10%, in terms of what, where we, where we would be. It ended up being roughly 12%, and this year, they're telling us it's going to be roughly 15%, and that's where we've been estimating. So, that's what the budget is reflecting, the 15% increase.
They want, the companies will not give us definite increase amounts. They can only estimate at this time of year for next year.
So, what they've told us is that it's on par with what they're seeing in the broader insurance market in terms of just increases across the board in the insurance sector. It's kind of a trend, if you will. So, couldn't really do anything about those numbers, other than I will tell you that we are still good in terms of, like, we're still doing everything we can to keep the costs down on our end through training and through just overall risk management type things, but...
Will we put that out on a bid, or how do we do that?
Yes, with regard to, our brokers, they do send out, and we just did that for our workers' comp, but the general liability one, it will be coming up shortly, actually, probably sometime in the next few weeks in September. We'll be getting applications, and we'll be getting, I'll be bugging everybody to tell me what they have and what's what, so that we can see if there's anything that... and what's what so that we can see if there's anything better for us after.
Are we usually able to go locally?
As local as we can, we use, we go through the Wayne County group. Our city rep is family and they try to get us with who's the best for us, so.
Any questions at this time? Workers' comp, I guess.
Okay, so as I said, the numbers are possible, we just estimated the fifteen percent in there. As far as like compensation numbers, they are really directly tied to our actual payroll figures, our reasons, our overtime. We've tried and they've done a great job over the years predicting and estimating what the payroll numbers will be to try to get those costs down so that the audit isn't so large. So it just, some of those numbers don't really change much. I will say that our experience modification or our mod is in good standing with regard to workers' comp. So we are able to benefit from that being in good standing. And we're just continuing with our overall risk management, safety efforts, training. Michael through my office does a lot of the health and safety trainings. He goes from building to building, he's logging in and now with our new software, he can do that even more efficiently. So it is, it is, you know, just our everyday goal with regard to that. We we did just renew that because it runs to until June. And so we did have a vendor that expressed an interest, but the vendor that we were going with, they were considerably lower and better. And so we just stuck with that, our current vendor moving forward. Because we found that they were, they had been providing reliable services to to us, too. So it wasn't worth it to switch for very little. That's really it. While we're seeing an increase just kind of across the board in the insurance market, we're still doing what we can to keep things as low as possible for us.
Questions? How many people are we covering?
Are we covering, you mean employees?
What's the number?
It can vary like from, I've been estimating several, like I've estimated four hundred at times and then other times low like lower three.
We get to about five hundred in the summer with the seasonals and then we run around.
So we cover this, we have to cover seasonal as well, right?
For, yes, we do for workers' comp.
And then in the winter, once the seasonals, like within the next two weeks, we're going to drop back down to around four hundred.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Well, after seven months in, there's a lot of things right now in the mayor's budget I liked and didn't like. And one of the things we discovered is that there were eleven positions in three of the departments who reported to the mayor, but they didn't show up in the mayor's budget. So that's why it looks like the mayor's budget on personnel is going tremendously, it really isn't, it actually decreases. So those eleven positions have been cut to ten positions. It's just if you'll see their expenditures coming out of the mayor's office, but the revenue still stays the same where it's coming from in the other areas, if that makes sense. So for example, code enforcement, it used to exist over here, now it'll show up under the mayor's department. But all the revenue for it still comes from the sanitary district through an interlocal, intergovernmental transfer. So actually, the total expense, if you put all those eleven and add them in here, it would have been like fifty thousand more than it is now. So actually reduced all those personnel expenses by about fifty thousand by paring down eleven positions to ten and moving them in here. So I think that's a good plan. And it it made sense in HR and it made sense in the county since their report to the mayor's office, they should be under the mayor's office, right? That's what we get. Also, supplies, a few changes. Didn't have enough money to buy everything we wanted this year, so just a slight change in supplies. Contractual service is interesting because I didn't know that there was no money in contractual supply services for this year in this budget, even though our first invoice was from a twenty twenty-three activity. So typically, we'll run about twelve thousand a year and it should have been in there. And I don't know why it wasn't, but anyways, we'll fix that. Contractual services, one of them was a Baker Tully expense last year for the salary survey. It actually was paid this year, but occurred last year. And most of the rest of those are the, I didn't read this to you. The emergency response, legal services for the former My Way Trading firesite. That's the majority of those contractual services that the mayor pays for. And that's going to continue next year, we assume, at the same rate. So until something happens with that lawsuit, the, what else, the word, nature just left.
Diversion.
All those people on the lawsuit, class action lawsuit. Unless that gets settled, then that could go to zero, but right now I don't expect it to. It's expected to be at twelve thousand.
I'm sorry, how much?
It's at twelve thousand this year, almost twelve thousand this year. We expect to be twelve thousand next year unless that gets settled quickly and that's not expected, so. So really, that's it, just moving some people around, actually saving money, but it won't show up here yet. Put all the other budgets together to see that. That's part of the way that this budget is actually less than last year in the general fund overall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying there is that will reflect these deductions, these reductions in the government departments for these expenses funded.
Yes. So you want, yeah. And if I may, I know code enforcement's tomorrow night. If I could go ahead and talk about code enforcement tonight, you'll see what changed there, but that's on Wednesday night. You can wait till tomorrow night. It's just that the.
We can pull it up if you want, Steve.
Yes. Sure.
Where it's at? Yeah. There it is. There you go.
Yeah, so all those are going to be pulled out to all the personnel's going to be pulled out and moved over, basically.
Five, six, and one, six.
Yes. Yeah, there you go. And what else did they change? Well, just the personnel comes in mayor's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the personnel comes in mayor's office. They still have their operational budget there, contractual services and everything else. And I don't think there's any major changes there. This is one that with, it's a weird situation. The director of code enforcement is on retirement leave, but is still being paid through the end of September. September, okay, anyways, so this is kind of weird. We basically just copied last year's budget, looking at what's happening for the operating expenses, for all their expenses. And if you want, we could do unsafe building too, unless you have questions about code enforcement. The only change in code enforcement is it's going to have a co-director now with a new, as you heard last night, public operations. Director of Public Operations Engineering will be their co-director or their director along with the other work.
We didn't hear that last night, did we?
Because they're physically in the same office next door to each other.
That was part of my salary ordinance amendment that I.
Speak up.
In the salary ordinance, speak up.
The salary ordinance amendment that I did last night or that I brought before you was reducing two positions and adding one new one. That's what this is.
Okay.
That's part of this reduction.
So there's a reduction of one position?
Yes.
Yeah.
And actually.
Code enforcement, correct?
Actually, really, one and a half because I can probably say this publicly, the part-time inspector got a promotion out of his day job and is not coming back. We don't know if we're going to replace it, so might be one and a half positions. If we can get by with inspectors we have, there's, we have it in the budget to have another part-time code inspector. But we'll see if we really need it, see how the rest of the year goes. It just happened like two days ago, so we'll see what happens.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've noticed a whole lot of yards in my neighborhood that aren't being mowed. I see trash cans out on the curb constantly. I see trailers parked on the curb all over my neighborhood again. So when these guys are on the road, are they not looking at these things and tagging them automatically?
They they do that and they take calls and we've changed the structure like this too, the the structure where the administrative assistant is now there as long as a building is open. She used to come in early to meet with the team in the morning and didn't make a lot of sense. She really needed to be there to take calls, paid to buy money for Friday, so we changed that to her now. So we have someone answering the phone up there all the time now. She used to be on an early shift and left early and it didn't really make sense. We would have walk-ins at three o'clock and she was gone because we don't want to get overtime, right?
We'll tell them they head over to Hidden Valley.
One of the problems we have annoying, I'll share this, because of all the rain this year, we pretty much ran out of mowing money two weeks ago. We had to move some money around in that department to come up with more mowing money. I know you've mowed your lawn, we mowed our lawns. Right-of-way mowing is tremendous expense, a hundred and twenty thousand a year. This should be closer to a hundred and sixty thousand, maybe? So we had to find, move some more money around to cover that because it just keeps raining, it's the wet, wetest summer I can remember.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Who's doing the mowing?
Right-of-way mowing is contracted. Those are all the right-of-ways that the city owns. Our code enforcement team does some cleanup work, they have just a couple of mowers. They don't do all the mowing, they can't, because only three of them anyways. They do more of the maintenance and the cleanups and the shuttering. And a lot of the shuttering is also done by contractors, it's too big of a job that our three maintenance crew can't house. We have a minimal department that can do little things and big things we have to contract out and that's in there too, contractual.
Yes, I would second Mr. Turner's opinion. I've seen a lot of yards that are not mowed, just walking my district.
Castina's airs called her and she'll, so I'll come on and flag it the next day. And there's a process, I've learned this too. Once we flag it, they get a certified letter, the postage is up, by the way, thanks, US government. They get a certified letter and they have what, ten days to actually mow it? So we can't go onto the property unless they don't mow within ten days. So in ten days with two more weeks of rain, it gets really tall. So as soon as we can, we flag it, send a certified letter and let them, call them, let them say, hey, mow this. And if we don't mow it, we mow in ten days and do a lien against it or send them a little.
Sort of made my point, I said, why don't they identify positions? Why do they have to call?
They do if they're out, yes, but they're usually out doing other things. And if they see it, they'll they'll flag and identify why they're out, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor, I think.
With only two of them doing that kind of work.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think that what you need to do is specifically go tell them when they're out, because I'd have to agree with my two cons, couple words here. They do not tag somebody if they just happen to be driving by. Because there there's.
Too many places.
Too many places that have been that way forever. I've got the same thing you've got, I've got trailers that aren't changed. And maybe they need to have a.
Traffic enforcement, those are trailers aren't changed.
Well, maybe they need to have a word from you to say, hey, I don't think you guys are doing everything.
They're doing buildings and yards, code enforcement is traffic division, police does the trailer, until the trailers.
Okay, well, we need to have that done too. Somebody else has a question?
Mr. Chairman? The vacant lots that belong to the city. I'll give you, I'll give you a specific. Where Warfield Oil used to be, there's an embankment over there. It was half mowed, it was actually chopped. Who is responsible for more than that when it comes to code enforcement? Is is that supposed to be Gordon?
Contractor, son of Warfield.
Are you a contractor, right?
Part of a contractor, yes. And we're supposed to take pictures before and after all contractors and we don't pay them until we see the jobs get done well, so if they didn't.
I've got pictures. Right after they did it and I will tell you, it is hacked. And they didn't even do it all the way up to the to the wall or the full length of that. It looks like a jungle. And when the mosquitoes come past, they sound like airplanes coming past.
Besides a small dog.
Yeah. Yeah, so and I, my constituents, I get a call at least once a week.
It's been a bad year for everything, mulberry trees just growing everywhere, weeds growing everywhere, it's been a rough year.
Mr. Chairman? Fireworks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With with a reduction in code enforcement, it sounds like maybe we might want to reconsider that empty vacancy position.
There's a inspector that's open, yes.
I would agree, since the big push now is for housing. And if it truly does go through like like it passed, there's no way they can keep up with with it without additional bodies.
Well, if you're up to it, I mean, I'm not opposed to hiring a third full-time inspector. The the part-time inspector was there for years just because of his day job. Now there's an opportunity, it's going to raise the budget, of course.
Is he a building inspector or code enforcement?
Code enforcement, code enforcement inspector. Yeah, building inspectors recover. New construction is building inspectors. That's a different department, that's planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question. Code enforcement, do they do the alleys? Because I've seen an alley where the grass is waist-high in an alley.
Alley is a really clean-up trash.
The property owner would own up to the alley, but it would be the property owner's responsibility.
In the alley? I'm talking about going down the middle of the alley, cracks and grass is growing up.
That would eventually be a code enforcement, yeah.
Because I don't think the street department has mowers, do they? So code enforcement probably have to mow it, yes.
Code enforcement, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I apologize for that letter to you.
Mr. Purcell?
No shame in my game.
I have to agree with my colleagues, most of the complaints and calls I get are on or all under code enforcement. And I've been working closely with them as well as the attorney's office because also brush, I forget the exact name for it falls under this, et cetera, that we have not been dealing with in the past. And if the new ordinance coming up for the blight elimination is passed, that's going to require even more help in code enforcement, so I would highly suggest.
Something more money.
Well, there will be money through that ordinance to help pay for this.
From where?
There's fees for registering these blighted buildings. And my point being is, is I I agree with the colleagues, I think this is a department that we cannot afford to cut right now until we get this blight under control.
The only thing to be cutting is not having a full-time director, then we have a twenty percent director and that's enough because they have a good crew. Question is, do we need another full-time inspector?
And I would say yes.
Do you still have questions or comments?
We can put in a salary ordinance, right now it's a half-time inspector for the third inspector. We can change it to a full-time inspector if you want to lean toward unbalancing the budget a little bit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, yeah, I don't think, I I just think that we're asking for you to reconsider or consider strengthening the department. We're not, we're not in favor of unbalancing a budget, but we're in favor of our responsibilities.
Will say.
Will say.
Any additional questions or comments before we move on? Mr. IT?
You want to do unsafe building because that was under code enforcement too, there's no changes. That'll save you last night.
Let's let that simmer until tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Let her simmer.
Let it simmer. We may want to discuss that. IT?
Okay, here we go. It was easy last year. Yeah. This year is not going to be so easy, I don't, I don't think. I'm the guy that comes in that says, hey, I'm not coming in under budget, I'm.
Go ahead, sit back down.
Hey, okay. It's quite the opposite.
Chair, scroll down.
Oh, where's it go?
Further back.
It's there.
Oh, no, I didn't do it. It's all right, it's in the next, it's in the next room.
I think the main topic of discussion would be the forty-four thirty-five line.
Yeah.
Which falls under computer equipment.
No, it's it's the, it's twenty-two forty, it should be the next one. I thought I actually just stuck it on here, I guess I did.
I see no capital out there.
No, it's not here, it's on. No, it's not here. It's on twenty-three. Go ahead, close this one.
So you guys are good with everything, right? Okay. As long as it's bad enough, well, I've got.
Hi. Beats me, I don't know.
I would be interested.
Go to strategic initiatives on Wednesday. Yeah. Go to edit fund. Yep. Go down to, it's the forty-four thirty-five.
Under edit?
Under edit.
Just saying?
Yep. Right there it is.
So where are we?
Yeah, right there. That's the one.
Where is this again?
This is actually in the edit fund.
Which area, where?
The twenty-two forty account. It is actually on Wednesday under strategic initiatives.
About the, oh, laptop question and all of that, yeah.
Tracy has one account that, for computer equipment in this particular fund, and so that's the one we're looking at.
Forty-four thirty-five.
Oh, yeah, that's the big one.
Does that reflect in this budget that we're looking at, though? It's just not long. So that's. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
I have a six-year. Wednesday.
I do not. I wasn't able to get it to print out of BSNA's like screenshot.
You want me to make copies? Because I know that's a big increase in our.
Oh, definitely.
While she's doing that, why don't you go through the rest of your budget?
Um, I don't think, uh, much has changed, uh, the, the rest of the budget. I know that, I see that there was a decrease, a decrease in what I had budgeted for, like, travel and training. But other than that, I don't think much has.
Any questions?
One thousand lines.
Okay, I have a question. Does anybody else have any questions right now? Yes, sir.
Mr. Berger. Um, I know we've had the discussion about updated, uh, software coming. Um, does that, will that begin in twenty twenty-five?
Um, it began this year.
Okay.
I actually found, uh, some money from a project, a previous project that I used to purchase the software. Now it'll, it'll renew annually, so it'll fall, but it's been paid for, for twenty twenty-four. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And that falls into three thousand.
Um, yes. Or.
Services.
Well, no, it actually came out of that.
This was the, uh, this was the upgrade that he spoke to finance committee about?
Yeah, so we had a, we upgraded the switches, um, the network switches around the city, and there was money left over from that. And so I used that money to purchase auto mocks and lulu witches, um, are, it's threat management and, um.
But that's a service.
Yes.
Any additional questions, then? I have one about your contract services. If I'm reading this correctly, seventy-nine ninety, each five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that was.
And you've spent one hundred and sixty?
Probably. And so that was just, again, just carryover. I just.
So you don't need any of this?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, the year before, there was a fiber cut. We used contractual services to repair a fiber cut. I don't know that I need actually five thousand, but I don't know what I don't know. You, you follow me?
No, I don't follow you. Five thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, doesn't, you know, doesn't have to be, as far as contractual services. I, actually, I am probably more worried about my operating budget than contractual services. If you, if you kind of look at the, the line items, like, okay, so twenty twenty-three, uh, that particular line item budget was, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. And we ended up coming in probably thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand over that year. Then my budget was cut to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we were already close to forty in the hole. So now I'm operating at almost negative ninety. And if you look at the line items, if you take, like, BSNA, let's just take BSNA or email or G-Suite licenses. And say CrowdStrike or antivirus software, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there. So I have nothing else to operate with. I have nothing else to buy spare equipment with. I have.
What line items is that, please? I'm sorry.
That's on the edit fund.
Oh.
That's where it came down, I think.
So.
That's all coming out of the edit.
Oh, there they are.
Page forty-four thirty-five. Yeah. So, so.
Can you explain this for us?
Sure.
We don't understand it.
Okay, so these are the things that, um, I've, I've taken detail in what comes out of the IT budget and what I pay for, for the city. So, um, G-Suite is our email. That's everybody that has a city email account, you know, we, that's paid out of my budget. Uh, Fortinet is our firewall. VMware is, um, our storage. Or, well, it's actually VMware is what actually runs on the servers. They're, they're virtual. I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds, but it's, it's our, our virtual servers, yes. Um, ESET we don't use any longer. BSNA is, um, our financial suite, uh, timesheets, POs, that whole thing. Um, so it's just, I mean, basically, I mean, I can go line for line and tell you what everything is, but it's basically what comes out of the IT budget as far as what we cover for the city.
And what was your budget for twenty-four?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty?
Yes.
And now it's requested a two-eight-four?
Yes, sir.
You say that just directly covering exactly the cost of desires?
Correct.
But no.
Prior to this year, it was just a, I, I don't want to say yes, but an educated, um, okay, this is what we're going to need for this year. We asked Tracy this year to itemize everything so we knew exactly what was going to be needed to run IT. So that, that's what you're looking at. That's the list.
I mean.
Oh, wait. Excuse me.
So, and I don't see anything. You got computers in forty-four thirty-five here, and this is coming out of forty-four thirty-five in the edit, right?
That is correct.
I don't see any monitors. I don't see any cables.
I don't have any money to purchase any of those things.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah.
And so that is why separate departments are asking, she's asking to buy laptops. I feel like the IT department should have enough funding to be able to purchase equipment. I can't purchase any equipment. There's, I don't even have enough to pay the bills, let alone purchase any equipment. So we take that five thousand dollars in contractual services.
Are you, are you through?
Yeah.
Mr. Purcell.
Uh, yes. Like, I have a question. Like, BSNA, that seems like that should be under personnel, not under IT. Just in my, because that's a software to deal with.
Right.
Or payroll, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
And code enforcement.
Okay, I mean, yes, so it covers.
I would disagree with that.
And RPNL, RPNL, even because the intergovernmental transfers, so be it, Senator.
That just seems a little bit misplaced in the budget.
I mean, it is a, a software that the whole city uses. I mean, I, I, I understand why it's being taken out of the IT budget.
You can't.
I just think that the IT budget should have the money to, to pay for that. I mean, I, there, there are several things like that. Um, I have to charge each department, uh, separately for their Laserfish licenses. Um, what else is there like that? There, I mean, there's quite a few things like that, and I don't know if it was set up this way because of the, you know, the revolving door in the IT department to begin with. So it's kind of got placed in other people's laps while they were filling, you know, my role. Or the constant change in my role that other departments took on some of these responsibilities. But, um, in the long term of things, I would like to see the IT department be the umbrella over all of that. And so I don't have a problem paying for software. I just don't have the funds to do that. Or, you know, Foxit and all of these other things that everybody uses, the separate departments have to pay for their licenses themselves because it's not within the IT budget to.
I strongly understand, as, you know, having been a past department head, that where it comes from, as far as financially, isn't that important because it's all in the budget.
Right.
But accountability.
Exactly.
Is what I'm talking about, to where it comes from.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berger.
Um, and that, that, when, when I was talking to Tracy earlier, that's exactly what I was referring to. I feel like we're, we're really missing, uh, an opportunity here when a, a department like IT can have a contractual situation where they're purchasing a hundred units and they're going to get a deal. And, and now he can investigate what is best for the city as a whole. And so if I'm in this department and I can go out and buy the Cadillac of computers, then it's kind of the Wild West as far as I'm going to get the nice, I'm going to get the Apple. And over here, they're going to get the Dell. And, and so I feel like, um, having the purchasing power, um, but also having the consistency and, and someone that is controlling the quality to make sure, don't just buy the computer, but you have the wires to go with it. You have the monitors to go with it. And so I, I think that this is a, um, unintentionally maybe a misuse of, of focus here.
Well, to, to your point, um, we do operate under a state QPA, so we do get quantity rates from, like, Dell, SHI. I mean, the same the state would get when they buy, and we get it on an individual basis. So the cost, if, if I would purchase, or I'll actually make the purchase, um, through our state QPA, and we get it at, you know, the best price that we're going to be able to get it. And we can get one, two, three at a time. We don't have to purchase necessarily hundreds of them to get that pricing. But, um, in saying that, I would also like to eventually come up with a standard, um, because in doing that, um, like you said, some people could buy a Mac, some people will buy a Dell, some people will buy an HP. And. Well, like, you know, thumb drives and.
Wireless mouse, wireless keyboard, to the, to the point where, you know, um, if you do know what is in service right now, um, there might be foreign, um, entities coming into our computer system which will eventually cause a problem. And so not only the financial side of, of getting things together, but also the awareness and, um, you know, I, and, and then the accountability too. Because now we know what's coming in. Um, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, do you have an inventory, inventory of the equipment that we have currently by age, condition?
I do not. Not, that's another thing. I mean, there needs to be a refresh cycle established, and I can't do that if everybody is buying their own equipment at different times. Um, so, yes.
Mr. Burger. Mr. Gus.
When I was IT director, all purchases of computers came through the IT department. All, no matter what department it was. And part of the key thing to that is, and one of the keys to security, is to know what's on your net. Yes. Be able to give you a list. Like, if you can't do that, you don't have any security on your network. We don't want to be the city that's on the news with ransomware, you know? And, you know, I understand that our department will have specialized software, the police department will have specialized software. But the IT guy that's in charge needs to have input on that.
Yep. I agree.
Because he understands the things that need to happen to support that software, the equipment, all, how much that's going to cost. You know, it'll save money in the long run. Put all those purchases under the IT department.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll be honest with you, I'm just absolutely blown away that there's no standardized, um, computers to purchase through your department or were set by you. Or that there's not also a replacement plan taking into consideration the number of computers we have replacing X number per year. I mean, that only makes sense.
Correct.
It's really pretty shocking. It's something we definitely need to work on, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
May I suggest that what you want to do is to get an idea as to what you think would be the best way to serve the city as far as finding out what computers we have and, and getting them all together and come to council and, and let us know exactly what's going on? It sounds like we're all in, we're going six different ways and six different opinions.
I'll get one.
And I think what we need to have is one opinion and then, and then an approval. Can we do that?
Deserve it.
Does that sound okay to this council?
Yeah.
Mr. Angle. We would also, I would guess, need some kind of timeframe, and if it's going to be a purchase for twenty twenty-five or, you know, what the cost is going to be. There's a whole bunch of questions that would go into that. It's not like you're going to bring it to us and we're going to say, okay, go ahead, whatever.
Right. I mean, I don't even, to be perfectly honest, gathering that information, I don't know how we're to start. Really? I mean, because, again, um, police have their own purchasing process. Fire has their own purchasing process. Sanitation buys, but, you know. And so I would literally probab-, I would probably have to go and hand count and take serial numbers. I mean, you know, because there's no record of, maybe I could dig through past purchase records, but again, to know exactly what the machines are, when they were purchased, when they need to be refreshed, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Tracy.
Thank you, sir. Um, just, just to clarify, when I stated that, you know, I needed two laptops, well, we had an emergency, we need one right away. I always call Tracy to do the purchase for me. I do not do it myself. It comes out of my budget, yes, but he is the one that makes the purchase, PO and.
In this building, he's running ordinary computers.
Right.
Police and fire are a different story. They've been in issue since January, so we're still working through that.
Police, fire, and sanitation.
But what Tracy will have to do is similar to what the finance department's going to have to do theirself, working on a capital asset list. They need an IT inventory list. And that's going to have to be with the help of the other department heads, be a physical, get the information you need.
I'm hoping that, um, the new HR software that was purchased will help with some of that as well because a lot of that information will go into that portal as well. So, uh, assets that the employee has, um, so as they offboard, uh, we will be able to retain that equipment. Um, so I know, hey, you had a laptop, you had a, a desktop and a monitor and blah, 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 a cell phone, you know. All of that will be inside that HR portal as well. So that will definitely help me with inventory management.
Mr. Turner. I think an inventory process is fairly simple. You just need to create a form, and for each piece of equipment, whatever you want by way of record, should be shown on that form. And to pile those to every department head and tell them to bring them back next week, fill it out.
Yep. Put them in charge of that. Yeah. That takes easy for you.
Mr. Purcell, I don't want to beat this.
Any different technology way to do it?
I know with the fire department, we have a program called PISO that keeps an inventory, lifespan, et cetera, et cetera, all equipment. And then a lot of stuff actually on handwritten spreadsheets that notifies us, et cetera. But my question at this moment is, is we have the safety committee, we have all these different committees. But my question at this moment is, is we have the safety committee, we have all these different committees. Should we create or is there a committee this would fall under to assist in this process? So if we can bring back a recommendation instead of going through this again when he actually comes to us with this plan.
You go, Doug.
You could have an ad hoc committee to help him.
That would be up to Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Yep.
Something we need to bring up.
I don't have my list of committees with me tonight to look at.
We'll bring it up to Nick.
But that will be taken care of, right?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're going to take care of it, Tracy.
Joe, you're chair.
Okay, fine. And I, and I would agree with that.
Hopefully.
And, and you're, and you're still going to have a job, buddy.
We put that list now.
We just want to help.
Is there anything that we can discuss regarding Tracy's budget at this time that we need to discuss? Or are we satisfied with the budget that's presented in front of us?
We may have to do something.
Mr. Burghardt.
Well, just as a comment, I don't, I don't think we can be satisfied at the moment. But for a little bit of homework to be done and maybe a, a re-presentation on.
Outside of the assets that you're asking or the inventory, none of those numbers change. I mean, it's, it is what it is. That, that doesn't include any kind of hardware purchasing. Those are the bills that the IT department has to pay.
And maybe a little bit more on that. If, if we actually have in 2025, these fixed costs of $284,280.26 and if I heard correctly that it's budgeted $150,000, then what?
$150,000 is a 24 budget.
Okay. So, so are, have we budgeted $284,280.26?
For 25.
For 25?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll take care of it.
That would be a budget shortfall.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brill.
But you'd need other equipment, right?
Normally, the way that it's being done, I mean, we probably would be able to purchase replacement equipment. A monitor goes out, a PC goes out, those types of things. But as far as like a fleet, no. Or, and so what we have been doing is, again, the departments themselves have budgeted equipment costs into their own budget. And a lot of them do come to the IT department and I will make the purchase for them. The department will pay, I would create the PO, contact the vendor, do that kind of thing.
But it's. Their budget, not your budget.
That is correct. And then, then there's fire, police and sanitary who order their own stuff. And that was going on before I got here and has never really, that process hasn't changed since I've been here. They kind of take care of their own. Although I kind of see what, I see what fire and police order because they order from the same Dell off the, off the same QPA. I don't see sanitation. I'm not exactly sure. I don't know if you can feel where he, does he purchase from the same QPA?
He purchased, so sanitary district has its own IT personnel. It kind of serves under the umbrella of Tracy's. And we're working through clearing that up from the way it's been passed around. But the sanitary district either purchases through Sourcewell, which is basically a QPA, but a national version of the QPA or QPA itself.
Is that, oh?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Applause.
You did well. You did well.
For Tracy.
Can I honestly tell you, you'd rather have Tracy purchasing all of our stuff than me, who's a non-IT person.
I got you, Teal. I got you.
Where are you starting at, Tracy?
I'll start in MVH non-restricted. Three. I'm going to three. Sorry. That was Ben three. Now?
Yeah. Thank you.
MVH non-restricted, not too many changes. 2201, 2212 tires. I increased it 5,000 for cost increases of tires. 3210 telephone up 1,500. I think we're going to be short this year in that account. 3510 electric up $2,000. 3620 repair equipment, I put in $10,000. That's for MVH services, non-restricted account. LRS, local roads and streets, 2202, 2410. LRS.
Oh, he already went to LRS.
Yeah, or maybe.
He's going to pass me. So you're done with this?
I'm done with. Unless they've got questions, I'll, 2201, non-restricted.
2201, you're still wrong.
Yeah, you're right there.
Wasn't it?
Yeah, LRS.
You just passed it. Yeah, it's not very big. Local roads and streets, LRS, 2410 general supplies. I added $5,000 due to cost increase of tools, shovels, rigs. That's the only increase in that. 2203 MVH restricted.
He switched again. He's moving fast. I know.
Tires and tubes, right? 2362 stone and gravel, I added $1,000, up, up to $1,000. 2410 general supplies, I added $5,000 to it, cost increase. And the big ones, 3990 contractual services, didn't get funded last year. I, I funded it for 300,000. That's to cover the community crossings grant for paving. When we come to that next year, so. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Engel.
Do we know, are we getting a share of that community crossings?
We did last year, yes.
I know we did last year. What about for next year?
We won't know until we present in January. We have, we'll have to present our.
Requests.
Paving all people in the next.
Okay.
He'll come back and help.
Mr. Chairman.
Good.
I think we did three and a half miles of streets this year, 12 sections.
12 sections, yes.
Community crossings.
Yes.
Came down really nice.
I thought so too. I really do appreciate all the work that you've done, especially on South A, where they needed it.
Bachmeyer.
Yeah.
Part of Bachmeyer, Almont Road, that was a mess up.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Have we used all that money yet?
Oh, yes.
The reason I'm asking, we have promised a lady over there in the Bachmeyer addition that we would do a little bit of work there and we haven't done that.
Yeah. What street is that?
I don't remember.
My in-house crew is still working. They have a little more money left. They are still working, so.
We'll get some coal badge.
Mr. Chairman. I can check and see for it. Because we had, I was there when the city engineer was talking to you and, and you two promised this lady and she's not received it.
Yeah, Golden Lane, I know, didn't make the list this year, even though it was on it. There was an area in Cedar Cliff that didn't make the list. I know it was on it.
That's, that's the one.
Yeah, we just didn't, I mean, we just ran out of money. And last year, the contractual really wasn't funded, so. So we were scraping by to get what we got then, so.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes. I had called you about the intersection area, I think 1,400 blocks from South Ford. Did you take a look at that?
Yeah. I think Cooley was up there. There, there's a soft spot right there.
Yeah, it was totally broken down.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll take.
If it dries out, we'll take a look at it again. We're, we're trying to let it, see if it dries out or not, so.
Okay, is there a water issue then down there?
I think it's coming from Third Street up above there and coming down from somewhere.
Well, this is off subject of the matter, but thank you.
Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Teal.
Do you then feel that you have enough money in contractual, contractual services for next year?
I can take all the money, you give.
That's not the question.
Honestly, Community Crossing will give us a million dollars if we can put up a million dollars. So, so far the budget hasn't supported that, so.
We have like 300 in there?
Yeah.
So are you saying they'll get, they'll match that?
They'll match that, yes. That's the whole part of Community Crossing.
They do match that now. What you're saying is, if we put more in there.
Yeah, if we can put a million dollars up, they match us a million dollars.
We'll find a way to make up that $10,000 we lose on circle records. We could do a lot of these things.
Yeah.
Additional questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What about alleys?
What, is there a, a schedule for paving alleys? How, how does that work?
I get, Randy, right from sanitation sends me a list of alleys that they, the sanitation drivers go through the alleys all the time. They'll send a list of the alleys they think are bad. So we'll go through and, and do what, you know, we can do for the alleys.
When you say do what we can do, what does that mean?
Well, I think.
How many do you do a year or a spring, summer, fall season?
Sanitary gives us $30,000 to do alleys. So, yeah. So right now, the guys are out patching alleys pretty much before they start repaving some of them. So we'll, we'll patch as many alleys as we can to get by because it's not really a priority. And then we'll pave a few. The problem with alleys is the drainage is you add to the, the height of the alley. So it causes drainage issues in people's garages and stuff like that, so.
Of course, many of us have used the alleys as our, our front drive. So it's so important that they are drivable. You know, I mean, mine's horrible. And it's, and this year, the snowplow came through and wiped out, you know, the T intersections, so. But it's something that we have to consider, I think.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're up to paving alleys. The problem is, like I said, we usually run into drainage issues after we pave, so.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes. Along those lines, I've been a strong advocate of looking at the alleys and the infrastructure, especially in the core of the city. And I think that I checked and it's like $7 a square foot to tear out and replace the alleys, if I remember right. And so it would take really some focus on finding the funds to do that. But as you said, the proper way is to tear out and replace because of what you were talking about in adding the, the depth and screwing up the flow.
Yeah, you, you definitely want to know, you know, the funding for alleys.
Any questions regarding Teal's budget?
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So salt, are we saving money on salt because we're, I don't think we're using a whole lot of salt?
Yeah, we saved a lot of money on salt.
The win, the winters are not real bad.
Right. And then I'll, I'll move some of that salt money into paving or into concrete, you know, if we need it. So I'll transfer money that way, so.
Additional questions, comments? Everybody's happy to do a budget, I guess.
Thank you.
I seem to have another 3 million.
Denise.
Go ahead, mine is off.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to take a break before this?
That'd be fine. Take a 10-minute break. We're ready to resume. And we'll start off with the budget from the Park Department. Denise, it's all yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I have given you a couple pieces of paper. A couple of them are a little thick. And I think it's important that you have all of the information in front of you. Sometimes when you're going through your computer, it's hard to stay with us. And so I like to have it kind of listed out in all of the line items and then to go through a little bit about the Parks Department. So I'm going to be going through this document right here. As you can see, Emma is our business manager. She helps with the budget and I really appreciate her. So Emma Stanton is her name. She does a great job here with the Parks Department. So as you can see on the top here, we do have the park reverting budgets. And then on the right, we have the park non-reverting budgets. So on the, on the left, you see Common Council oversees these budgets. And then the Park Board oversees the ones on the right. So I'm going to be going over the, specifically the ones on the left. Okay? I also want to draw your attention to the blue. In 2019, we actually took Middle Fork Reservoir and Sports and Recreation that were non-reverting funds and we put them into the tax base. So just note that, and that is why they have a separate account. They are 2204 account, but I've highlighted those in blue on this particular paper so that you can kind of understand that those are separate accounts. And then we, we budget a little separately for those. And we're going to go through a, a couple things really quick just to kind of highlight some positives. Our facility rentals and revenue have increased each year since we went to the online opportunity for our consumers. And so I just want to kind of show you those online totals and that data there. The support of parks obviously is huge right now. We really appreciate that, especially the support of council administration. We appreciate you. But we also have for the third year in a row, a fully funded position in the Parks Department by a donor. And so I just want to draw your attention to that. We're very thankful for that. And, and we appreciate that our Trail and Service Leader position is fully funded. And that is not something that, you know, we have to worry about each and every year for the last three years. And so that is very generous and we do appreciate that. In terms of our pool lifeguards, this year, we didn't really have to worry. We had a lot of lifeguards sign up. We had 32 lifeguards and four pool managers. No, I've come to you before and said, we've had a lot of trouble getting lifeguards. And this year was seamless. And we're really grateful because RPD and the PAC Division helped out at every family night. And that was sponsored by the VFW Post 1108. So that partnership was very essential to what we were able to provide to our families this year at the pool. Talking through on page two, flip over, grants and donations. And I will send this to you in a digital format after we leave this evening. So you can open up all these documents for your reading pleasure. But we do have a, a link here for the donation chart of accounts. You can see how much we have in each chart of accounts for every area that we, we raise donations for. And that's something we come to you each year to do. We also have a donation tracking form that we do where we, we track each and every donation that we receive and every grant that we receive. And this showcases that we've surpassed 2023 and we're not even halfway through the year. So we're on track and we really appreciate those generous donors and those generous grants that we're receiving. We have a passionate team and that is completely our, our, our park positives. We have a lot of park positives, but those ones I wanted to highlight for you today. We also have some park challenges and you can read those as you would like. Now going through our park fund, starting with the 1,000 accounts, I have them listed here just like they're listed in your computer. So we can go down through those and talk a little bit about the increases that you see. And the park team 2024 request kind of highlights in a table on page three. And the park team two thousand and twenty-four request, um, kind of highlights in a table on page three the difference between two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four and then the request of two thousand and twenty-five. And the difference of the full-time, part-time and seasonals each and every year. And so in two thousand and twenty-five, we're requesting to have twenty-one full-time staff and ten part-time staff. And of course, the seasonals vary each and every year. And as we continue to move on to the, you can kind of see that obviously the insurance provision is not something that we control, that's something that is given to us. And, uh, two thousand and twenty-five, um, that insurance has went up to four hundred and thirty-six thousand in our budget. And so it's something that we just have to accommodate, place in our budget. Any questions on the one thousand accounts that I can answer for you?
Any questions? I have one.
Yes.
You have twenty-one people, does that include the, uh, one that is included with the grant or that make twenty?
Yes, sir.
That'd be twenty-two then.
That would be twenty-two, these actually do not include any that are not in the non-reverting.
Okay.
As we're just going through the non-reverting, I mean, the, the reverting fund.
Thank you.
Two thousand accounts. We'll start with the twenty-two eleven fleet oil and gas, currently we're averaging about four thousand four hundred monthly. So I'm increasing, um, that five thousand dollars to accommodate any increases for fuel prices. And on page five, I have outlined a chemical table, so you can kind of see how chemicals have risen over the years. You can see what we've had to pay for in terms of our pool and splash pads increasing as well as the new state mandates for the, um, the splash pads to be, uh, re- reviewed each and every week. And, um, that is something that has increased our chemical supplies each and every year as well. So this is a new mandate in two thousand and twenty-four and I see the increase happening again in two thousand and twenty-five in chemicals. Um, in twenty-four ten, general supplies, these are, it's our concession operations, safety equipment, ice melt, fountain needs, petty cash reimbursements, anything along those lines and with the cost of your goods sold going up, requesting an additional nine thousand dollars in that, in that area. In twenty-four twelve, you see playground needs going up eight thousand dollars, but you see we didn't budget for that last year. And I just want to draw your attention to that is in every other year need where we, um, buy safety mulch for the playgrounds to accommodate our compliance. So this is the year that we will buy that safety mulch and, um, and, and continue that compliance. So that's the eight thousand dollars that you see there. Twenty-five eleven, this is the greenhouse supplies and we just broke down, um, there's a digital copy of the budget here and then also the floral division duties and responsibilities, so that, that's a question I sometimes get, what does the floral division do? Most people see them out like little worker bees all over the city of Richmond and downtown, but I like to just highlight their duties because some people like to say, well, what, what kind of things do they do, especially in the winter? So, and I like to highlight that. Uh, twenty-two thirteen, fleet maintenance and repair parts. Of course, you understand that we have an older fleet, costs of parts are going up. Um, we either need to make sure that we have those four thousand, thousand accounts in the capitals that we're suggesting and requesting or we might have to reevaluate this particular line item, just like twenty-two oh four, um, which was our equipment, maintenance and repair parts there. In building materials in twenty-three ten, as you see, we are, uh, averaging about, in two thousand and twenty-three, we average about twenty-five hundred dollars per month in building materials due to vandalism and other repairs. In two thousand and twenty-four, we're averaging about thirty-five hundred dollars a month. And so we're requesting a necessity of an increase of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to accommodate that. Any questions in the two thousand accounts for the park?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Denise, I do have a question, twenty-four ten, general supplies, ice melt, where do you get your ice melt from? Is that, do you buy that from the street department?
Um, so these, we actually get our, our ice, um, from the street department in terms of when we plow. But the ice melt is for our facilities that we buy here. So those are bags of ice that we buy in bulk.
She put salt, salt, salt.
Salt is what we get from.
Putting ice on.
Sorry, si- salt is what we get from T L and the street department. Ice melt are in the bags that we use for facilities in bulk. And we get a, uh, collective, um, amount, we bit that out for the entire city. Thank you, T L.
Denise, do we have cameras that are working at, at Middle Fork?
Um, yes, we do, and we'll be actually talking about cameras here in just a minute.
Did they, did they not, that didn't help with vandalism?
Um, which vandalism at Middle Fork?
Well, you said they were all going up.
Um, so there's vandalism at each one of our parks sadly.
Yeah.
And so Middle Fork is just one of the places that we see vandalism out of our twenty-three facilities that we maintain.
Do we have the cameras on everything?
Um, so if you'll draw your attention to page eight, you can see the camera locations that we currently have. We can jump to that, if that's your bike.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, maybe another question on your question is, um, we've learned that the cameras in the parking garage are not actively monitored. Are these, are your parks cameras actively monitored?
Actually, R P D is working on getting, um, active monitoring currently, they're working with R P N L currently right now. Um, I will tell you that I review them more than I would like, how about that? Um, they, if there's any issues, then we go back and we review the footage and then we work with R P D to, um, figure out if we can fix the situation or determine who made the criminal activity.
So we're really, is it pertaining to vandalism or not?
So, let's take, for example. Absolutely, there's surveillance signs at these locations where we have cameras to show that you're under surveillance. That helps a lot of the activity for, for sure. But we only have one, two, three, four, five, six, six locations that we can have these cameras at. And that, some of this is, uh, because we don't have Wi-Fi at these locations. You have to have Wi-Fi at the locations to be able to have the cameras. And then, you know, this, for example, when our catalytic converters were stolen, we were able to catch the criminal that stole the catalytic converters. But the, the criminal activity was done, they were prosecuted, but the criminal activity was def- you know, it was, it was, it was complete and we had to wait to use those trucks and, you know, I mean, there's still processes in this, um, situation and it took a while to catch the criminal. I mean, there's, it takes a while, but yes, some of these work and some deter the criminal activity. Would I say that all of them work the way we want to? Not necessarily, I, I would love to have Elstra work a little bit better. But, I mean, there's certain areas that I think, um, could work a little bit better than others, but we're working on it. Clear Creek does a great job, they have the Facebook Live on the pickleball courts. We have another area that shoots down at the drain court that has deterred a lot of criminal activity there. So, I mean, it depends on the day of the week and who wants to do the criminal activity. And I've learned from the day I started that I can't hold everyone's hand in this job.
Okay.
So, back to page six. Um, are there any questions on the two thousand accounts? Okay, so we're moving to the three thousand accounts and the physicals were actually, um, the cost increased, so we had to increase our costs for the physicals through H R. In contractual services, we are increasing that and requesting an increase of fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty. And that is because we're raising our contract services from five thousand to ten thousand a year. Um, this is what we had to do halfway through the year this year. This will also satisfy the increases in services we're seeing across the bar, board with some of the contractual services. For example, H VAC, electrical, um, and things like that. So that is where we're increasing there. We also had an increase in water testing for the increase of the state mandate. And then we have an obligation to our contract for the Richmond Farmers Market Assistant as well as our partnership we are requesting with R P D to patrol parks and make them safer, deter criminal activity and provide destination enhancement. Um, then we have an increase in P O S fees of, and we're, we're, um, having that at seven thousand five hundred. And then we move on to telephone and fax, we have an increase here, we're requesting up eight thousand dollars. And then that's towards talking through the camera locations, um, we do have an increase here because of the increased Wi-Fi and, and the increase in that line item, that's where we pay that out of. And we also have Glenn Miller coming where we're going to have another camera there, so I'd like to point that out. Um, so we're, we're pretty excited about having that one over on Don's Cabin in Roosevelt Hill at that restroom. In thirty-three twenty, contractual printing, um, we are hoping to work with a local newspaper for our rec guide this year. Uh, we've been, uh, talking through mailing out to their subscribers as well. And, um, so that's, uh, going to be a, a really good opportunity for us, um, working with the Western Wayne. And so we just want to make sure that we can increase to that, um, proper amount and then also some of the other contractual printing needs that we have. Um, for example, billboards that we print, that comes out of contractual printing. In thirty-four oh one, property and liability, that's calculation by H R, I think that, and Kenyatta actually refer to the fact that it is up fifteen percent, so we have to obviously make up that difference. The difference that I calculated here from two thousand and twenty-two raises us up about fifty-three thousand and since two thousand and twenty-two, we've had to accommodate. If we go into our utilities, we've seen a slight increase in utilities and a good estimate across the board is to just, um, calculate five thousand dollars to accommodate that increase. Thirty-nine seventy-five is our grant match, this is something that we've done for a number of years and that's the Richmond Farmers Market Coordinator and the Widow Person Services Part-Time Coordinator. And then also a, um, match towards Highland Lake Off Course is something new for the last two years. And so that amount, um, is going to be an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars in the thirty-nine seventy-five. Any questions in the three thousand accounts?
Any questions from council at this time? I have several, is that answered, want to go first? On contractual services, explain to me why.
Where's that?
Thirty-nine ninety.
Thirty-nine ninety, okay. We've only spent thirty-four thousand.
This is reflective, this number here is reflective of June and we also, this is also the number you're seeing currently in front of you is not reflective of any incumbent amounts.
And we, and you have, how much do you have in covered right now at your number?
There, we hear.
That's a tremendous increase.
As of right now, our current balance in thirty-nine ninety is.
I need to have these questions, Mr. Parker.
Three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
How much?
Three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
That's our current balance.
Is what we have remaining in our thirty-nine ninety.
And what do you expect, what else do you need to have?
What we, what we spend in contractual usually is, um, like she said, like our water testing, um, like our pest control. We've got Spear when they have to come out and work on our stuff, um, Specialized, our Corson, when they have to come out and do our, um, alarm panels, um, when they have to do our, uh, anything with our security.
We have our Rico printer.
We have our Rico, we have our towing in there, if we have to do towing at all.
We have to tow a mower, we have to tow a truck, anything like that. Everything contractually labor oriented will fall into this category.
That's a tremendous increase, I think, fifty-two thousand. Another question I have is down here on the, uh, some of your electrical facilities and, and so on and so forth.
Where are you, Larry?
Um, thirty-five ten, thirty-five twenty, thirty-five thirty and thirty-five forty.
Yeah, if I'm going to what you have spent versus what you're projecting, it looks to me like some of them are a little high. For an example, gas, I understand gas you don't know because you haven't hit the, you haven't hit that one, so. But the electrical?
So you see in year-to-date here, electrical, um, we may not have enough to finish the year. Um, in gas, again, we're not really sure how that's going to pan out.
I don't have a problem with that.
And sewer, we still don't have the remainder of our water or sewer from the pool yet for July or August and that will spike considerably.
And then it'll drop?
Not necessarily, we'll still have, we'll still have a considerable amount of bills to pay for the remainder of the year. We have a ton of facilities that we oversee.
You won't have that pool on all that long.
We still have old splash pads until Labor Day two goes.
Correct, so you're not seeing the remainder of June, July, August in this calculation that you're seeing halfway through the year. So it's not a fair assumption that this is exactly what's going to be spent for a remainder of the half of the year.
Okay, I think it's high.
I don't want to spend it, I'd rather spend it in other line items.
Does anybody have any questions other than me?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would just say, um, as far as the pool, if, is this June one through June one?
It's usually June fifteenth.
Okay, so at, what you're maybe saying is that if pool opens Memorial Day, then this has been, um, this is really just through not even a whole. Yeah.
And usually utilities are in the, in the rear.
Proceed.
Okay. So, uh, going through the four thousand accounts, um, we talked through the four thousand accounts a little bit here. Um, as you know, those council members who have been on the, on council before, um, we have not been able to request any capitals for, uh, several years. And these are the capitals that we have been reviewing and meeting for quite some time. I've also planned, um, this capital plan here that I've, that I've given you. If you'll look at this plan here, just so you can refer to this and anytime that you might need this. But the capital outlays that I am requesting at this time have been prioritized. And in forty-four twenty-one is the infrastructure and that is a maintenance pole barn. The last two years, Glenn Miller Maintenance, well, Glenn Miller in general has had six break-ins and four have been at the maintenance complex. If we're going to invest in the equipment that I'm suggesting, then I am, I really would like to protect our investment. And so I really would like to see all of our equipment under shelter and in loft buildings. And currently, not all of our equipment is in loft buildings. And so it becomes enticing and it's a reason why we've had some of these break-ins. We don't have enough storage for our current, um, equipment and our current needs at the maintenance building. And that would be what the pole barn, barn, pole barn, pole barn would be for. And this two hundred thousand dollars is estimated for us to do a majority of the work. So we would be excavating, we would be doing the concrete. Moving on to the forty-nine ninety, let's go ahead and go to computer equipment, since you guys like to talk about that tonight. Um, I also go through Tracy and I also make sure that he is a part of every computer equipment purchase that we make. Um, I tell him what we're looking for and what we might need and he also gives us that guidance and recommendation. Um, and so there are a few that we have actually received recommendation from his department that need replaced. And that is what is in the forty-four thirty-five here. And then we go to forty-four ninety and you'll see on page nine, it goes through all of the equipment that we're requesting. We do have an equipment and fleet plan that has been identified and that is what we're requesting here. Two front deck mowers, two zero-turn mowers, three four-by-four fleet with the plow, three tilt trailers, currently we have ditch wood trailers that are unsafe and we're constantly trying to replace those. We have been able to replace a couple in the last two years, um, by savings that we've had in our budget. Our diving board, uh, it has broken, so we need to replace that at the pool. We also have a need for some janitor vehicles to be able to, uh, properly, be able to, um, efficiently clean the areas currently. They're on their last leg. We, our chipper is also needing time for replacement, it's nineteen ninety-eight. The brush cap for the bobcat is an attachment for our bobcat and then the. And then the stump grinder is an attachment for the stump grinder. And then the scissor lift is something we've been needing for a while as we are constantly renting that piece of equipment. And it would be advantageous for us to have our own. And that is because we constantly are having to change lights on the tennis court. And also we winterize and de-winterize starched net on a regular basis, as well as we need a scissor lift for, um, some of the things at the senior center as well.
Any questions this time?
Thank you. And just to kinda go through just a little bit on, um, the park budget's really concentrated heavily on some operations. So this year, we're concentrating on equipment. You'll see twenty-twenty-six concentrating on facilities and those needs. And I've put the capital asset plan here for you to talk a little bit about thirty-three twelve. Um, the park sinking bond, the bond is paid off and that has been paid off for a while. And so you probably are asking, well, what now? And I'm glad you've asked. I'm optimistic that with the outstanding leadership that we have here on council, that we can work together to decide a plan on the projects that are needed to go forward. So we talked a little bit about the equipment needs. We're gonna talk a little bit in twenty-twenty-six about the facility needs, but where does that leave us with projects, right? That's gonna leave us with needing a bond. That's gonna need us, lead us to what that looks like. And obviously, remember, we did a park master plan back in twenty-twenty. And we have not been able to do a bond for that yet. And that's really our due diligence to do. We told the community that we were gonna come to them with these projects and we were gonna do things that was on this plan. And we have not set out to do those just yet. And that is our responsibility as the Parks Department and as the governing body. So I think together, we can work towards that goal. And I have some ideas on how we can do that, but I do need your support to go forward with that. And I think we can have some conversations about how we can work together. These are not my projects. These are not gonna be your projects. These are gonna be community-driven projects that they wanna see, that have been identified in the plan. And so I, I have all that listed here. And most of these projects are just gonna rely on direct impact to quality of life, a specific drive to return on investment. So we can rely less on tax dollars. So I have to come to you every year with more money, more money, more money. And also to streamline the park system by providing effective ways to make more areas efficient and lower maintenance. And really find more opportunities to promote parks and programs. So that's what I have for you for the twenty-two oh-four, the park fund. But I have more information here for your review on the non-reverting accounts. And you can look through those and go through those at your leisure. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on those non-reverting accounts. And I will send these to you, um, so that you can review them at your own time.
Any questions regarding the budget?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chris Allen.
This is a little bit off subject, but I know recently we sold land, park land, are working on it for Chester Boulevard behind Berryfield. Is that correct?
So we haven't exactly, um, entered into that, uh, complete sale yet. We have a purchase agreement that has been approved by Board of Works and not as far as it has gotten to this point.
Do you receive the money from that?
Yes, we will.
Do you, how much is that projected to be?
Um, that has not necessarily been determined yet. I would hate to talk out of turn when I'm not necessarily sure and I don't have that money in my pocket. I hope that, um, the goal, how about this? The goal of those funds that are received from that sale of that property will go into Middle Fork reservoir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Of the Parks Property Committee, we agree to that, that any money that comes out of Berryfield goes to the closest adjacent park, which we know of.
But that's not in this budget at this time, or?
No, we would take, actually, um, the non-reverting account that you see here for the park capitals. It will go into that account either to build up, to be able to, um, fund something larger in Middle Fork when we can add to it, or fund something in Middle Fork directly. But it'll go directly into that account.
Any additional questions for Denise at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes care of everything we have on the agenda. However, since Pat is here and it's still not too terribly late, why don't we let him go ahead and talk about sanitation?
I'll get up here when I say no. It's not as confusing this year. Well, I tell myself.
Can you assure me it wouldn't, it wouldn't be terribly late?
So I will be, sanitary district has four main funds. I'll just be going over the six-six-oh-one, which is the tax fund, which is how we've done this the last three years. Um, as well as it's a associated capital improvement fund, which I've left in my folders. On the overall, six-six-oh-one is a reduced budget, um, from last year. Uh, in personnel services, we are at a two-point-six-six percent increase. Um, that is reflective of what the controller listed at the four percent for civilians and the asking bargaining unit, what their contract agreement was. So it's a two-point-six percent. Our two thousand accounts, uh, on the overall are up point zero-four-one percent. It's about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars total in all of the two thousand accounts. As you know, the confusing part of our account is that there has two departments in it, oh-five-oh-five and oh-five-oh-six. I will touch upon a few significant movements in that, but in the end, it's only of the, the total six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars-ish. There's only two-hundred-and-fifty dollars of increase, uh, from previous years, uh, budgets. Um, so some of the main increases in that two thousand, there's a lot of moving parts, ups and downs. But in the twenty-four-ten, the oh-five-oh-five twenty-four-ten account, there is a two-thousand-dollar increase. Um, the Ask Me Bargaining Unit, uh, through their labor management, they obtained every year five, uh, like t-shirts or work shirts that come to them. That happened in parks and street as well. Uh, I've scrounged that money for the last three or four years since that's been there, but it has its own placeholder. And it just kind of, instead of scrounging off the top of multiple counts, it has a placeholder that landed here. And that's a two-thousand-dollar increase. Uh, concrete went down twenty-five-hundred dollars. Uh, that decreases, uh, it really has to do with when we set pads or set three yards on pads and, and lease of that. And just what we've seen lately, uh, we did not feel like we needed that full amount. So that was a decrease of twenty-five-hundred dollars. And that's primarily, like I said, there's a few other moving parts, but it's overall just two-hundred-and-fifty-ish dollars difference. In the three thousand accounts, uh, there is a five-point-two percent increase, which is roughly a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, I'll go through a few significant notes, but primarily when I get there, it will be under the lease account, which is the, um, thirty-eight, thirty-eight fifteen, the oh-five-oh-five thirty-eight fifteen. Um, when I get to capital, you'll see a significant reduction in capital. Part of that is, uh, our commercial trucks, we had listed in the capital to be as part of the capital in the five-year plan. And it was in there for this year as well. But we found a better deal through Sourcewell, which is again, that national kind of, uh, federal purchasing contracting. And we found a lease there that was a better deal, so we moved that into our lease payment. So, uh, that is primarily that hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollar increase that you see, uh, in the three thousand accounts is really just us shuffling something that was in capital, um, down into three thousand accounts. But a couple of other significant items I want to note is the oh-five-oh-five thirty-one-twenty account in professional services. There's a forty-thousand-dollar increase that shows there. It's not, it is a forty-thousand-dollar increase, but we typically, uh, try to spread our payment to ACH, which is where we get our credit cards and that overseer of that credit card process. We try to split that fifty-fifty between six-six-oh-one and our, uh, sewer fund, six-two-oh-one. For some reason, twenty-four, it was split sixty-six thirty-three percent, so we just corrected that. So although there's a forty, a forty-thousand-dollar increase here, there's a forty-thousand-dollar decrease in six-two-oh-one. So it's just a, uh, accounting piece, not an actual increase of services or cost to us. Um, the next significant item I have on the list, there is something workings comp and stuff that every Kenyatta of our, has already explained. Uh, those pieces, um, lease payments was the next piece, which we already discussed. Um, there is in transfer of funds, the oh-five-oh-five thirty-nine seventy-four account, there's a decrease of a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. Um, the primary piece for this, uh, is that transfer of funds is where we send money into our capital improvement fund. And that's just kind of based on planning of projects. Um, we were conservative when we did the budget this year and we reduced what we put into our improvement fund. So that's just a reduction of what was going to the improvement funds. And part of that was, as the mayor was speaking to me and pulling code enforcement out, we weren't really sure where this was going to land. So we played a little extra conservative in, in several factors here. And I'll, I'll go through that in a couple of other places, uh, in the capital as well. Uh, but again, that's the primary, those are the significant changes in dollar amounts overall. Uh, like I said, it's up a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, but that's, that is essentially transferred as, as commercial trucks into the lease payments. In the capital, uh, lines, they are overall down forty-two percent, uh, which equates to about six-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there is a decrease in the capital lines. Uh, I've already explained that approximately two-hundred thousand, and that is a decrease in those commercial trash trucks that we moved to lease instead of purchasing them outright. Uh, another piece is in the oh-five-oh-five forty-three twenty-one line, uh, capital projects. Um, typically in the sanitary, the six-two-oh-one, the sewer, uh, account, we split fifty-fifty, um, to do lining projects for the sewer. Um, again, not knowing exactly how code enforcement was coming out and trying to be conservative on the tax side, we pulled that into a hundred percent into six-two-oh-one. It's probably not a long-term sustainable aspect. Um, the reason it really worked this year is we had a couple of projects on SRF that came in. Uh, we had some change orders and those overall costs of those projects went down and we rolled lining. That's a, that's an approvable SRF, uh, addition to those projects. So we rolled in, we kept that, uh, budgeted project cost there, but we did our lining into there. So it allowed me to absorb a hundred percent into six-two-oh-one because it was a reduced, uh, overall projected cost for twenty-twenty-five. So those two items together are the primary, uh, uh, driving factors. There is a reduction in the oh-five-oh-five forty-three-ten, uh, capital improvement facilities. Um, that's just based on need. Um, this year's, we had two buildings that needed modifications to them. Uh, one of them was getting floodwater into a, a storage, uh, piece for the Murph building. And then there was, uh, a locker room at the Murph that had to be repaired. So those things are on there for next year. So the reduction is just literally just based on projects and necessary, uh, need coming into next year. And the only other item there is other equipment in the oh-five-oh-five forty-four ninety. Um, this is a very similar piece. It's based upon, uh, items that we're actually purchasing this year versus items we plan to actually purchase next year. Um, there's just several. We are always trying to balance the, to buy like the Richie's, the Rosie's, the three yards are very expensive, but we always are trying to take inventory and just kind of guess. The contract allows us to spend quite a bit of money per year, maximum to that. But we try to actually ballpark what we think we're gonna spend. And it's just a little cheaper for next year as we look at that. Um, and that is primarily six-six-oh-one. Um, if there are questions, I will answer them. If not, I'll move into the capital improvement, six-six-oh-seven, associated.
Questions at this time? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sure that this has been looked at a thousand ways to Sunday, but leasing equipment is a better deal than buying?
Uh, sometimes, not always.
But that's what you're doing here?
What's that?
But that's what we're doing now?
That's what we're doing on those three, uh, trucks. And actually, the residential fleet, eighty percent of those are leased as well. Um, and it turned out to be better deals for us. Um, so we evaluate several things and some of it comes down to those, those, like QPA, the state or the Sourcewell, the national contracts, um, and the prices that fell in there. So we can sometimes get better deals that way. There's also lead times. Uh, so right now in that leasing too, we can get our, our trucks less than a year. Purchasing them outright, they have an eighteen-month lead time. So it's both cost and lead time on being able to get, uh, those vehicles in. But yeah, we spend quite a bit of time evaluating lease versus purchase. Um, so far, the leasing has, has proved us better in the two times we've done it in the trash fleets.
That's amazing to me because I, every time I've leased a car or a truck, it was a bad decision.
For us, we've, um, it helps in a lot of cases, uh, so before, when I first came into this position, in that month, I, I talked to several of you really quickly because the trucks were leaking so much hydraulic fluid and they all had holes in them. They're, at that time, they were two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars roughly a truck and we needed six. So the cost, if we entered into a lease, we could spend a little less than the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand per year. And we got all six trucks simultaneously instead of having, you know, to spend that giant capital expenditure to buy them outright. Uh, so some of it was just being able to replace the entire fleet, not nickel and dime our ways on the other trucks. Cause the cylinders that we were replacing were twenty grand a, a pop, you know, it was pretty expensive.
I understand that, that's a good stock gap.
Yeah.
Doesn't that come back to bite us later on?
It hasn't so far. I mean, so we leased our flush trucks as well. It's in the six-two-oh-one, the sewer maintenance department. And we have always gotten really good trade-in value at the end of that. I mean, sometimes a third of the vehicle, even after its five-year, and it's really getting old on its lifespan for us with the, the amount that we use them. So again, we spent a lot of time evaluating, but so far, the ones we have leased worked out. Now, there's a few, like I said, we bought two trash trucks this year that we bought outright, then we didn't lease them. This was a better deal in those cases, uh, through the lease program to do it that way.
Okay. That has never worked for me.
Yeah, and we knew that more. Like I said, a lot of it comes through the state's bidding program, but we get really good deals on those leases through that.
Any questions?
You don't want cylinder trucks.
And now, and now, I said that the trash trucks were two-twenty, let me follow up with that. The, uh, currently a trash truck is three-hundred-and-thirty. From twenty-twenty till now, they went from two-twenty to about three-thirty-ish, uh, per truck. So that lease again really helped us be able to replace that aging commercial fleet.
Continue, please.
All right. Uh, the next one is the six-six-oh-seven, which is the capital improvement fund, uh, associated, uh, with the six-six-oh-one tax fund. Um, this is a pretty simple one. Are you ready, Shane? So we are transferring two-hundred thousand dollars, uh, in this year. Uh, next year, we're only transferring seventy-four, uh, thousand into that fund. Uh, again, it was just playing conservative, not knowing exactly where that would land. Um, we are looking to spend out of this. We have two items. There's the two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand in the forty-through-ten under landfill self-construction. That's in this year's budget as well. Um, we will not be spending that this year. Um, we know that a couple of the sales are getting close to requiring being capped at the landfill. And we kind of wait on the Indian Department of Environmental Management to give us that okay. We know they're getting close, but we're just waiting on that. We've been budgeting it in case that comes up. Uh, so although there's two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand in this year's budget, that will not be spent, but we have budgeted again for next year. Um, if, in case they give us that, go ahead. The four-hundred-and-twenty thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty right below that is for, uh, a levy. Uh, at the treatment plant, there is a levy that goes around, uh, the entire treatment plant that's uncerti, it was built in the eighties and was uncertified. It needs a few modifications. I say a few modifications, like one and a half million dollars worth of modifications, um, to be a certified levy. But without that, a big chunk of the treatment plant is considered to be in the floodplain. It is not, that equipment's not insured for us, so we want to, it, it's far more than one-point-five million dollars if that should flood and we were to lose that equipment. if that should flood and we were to lose that equipment. We are working with OCRE. There is a grant that this project falls under, that we believe we can get. We have four-hundred-and-twenty thousand here, we have another four-hundred-and-twenty thousand in a separate capital improvement fund, but we believe we can get the other seven-hundred thousand or something through an OCRE grant. They feel really strong, we would be a very good contender for that. So we have placed that project on the list for next year, and we hope to go for the spring OCRE grant to obtain that grant for the levy. So both of those are, one is depending on item, and the other item, the four-hundred-and-twenty, depends on whether or not we get that OCRE grant or not. If we do not, we will hold back on that project and try to apply for it on different OCRE cycles. And that is all I have for six-six-oh-seven, unless there are questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Draymond.
Yep, so you have two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand set aside for landfill cell construction. That's not going to build a lot of cell, Ryan?
It's for capping. No, it will not cover capping. If we were to look at the twenty-two twenty-one, the landfill-specific fund, there's seven-hundred thousand dollars in that one for the same thing. So combined, we expect it to be around nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand to do the capping that would be required for the sales. We anticipate that could come up, so total, yes.
What about the Short Creeks project? There's nothing in there for that?
There is nothing in there on this one. We have actually spent the funds that were associated with that. It's actually finishing up, it should finish up here in the next month or two. It was two lift stations, one that goes on, up on Hayes, Hayes-Averiedum Road. There's the Hayes Lift Station, and there's the Short Creek, which is down on Liberty Avenue, just south of the plant there. And both those lift stations got done. Total cost, from memory, was roughly ten million dollars combined, but we got a two-million-dollar grant for that project we came to you. I think it was two years ago, we got that down. So we got two million of money we didn't have to pay back, so it drove it down to eight million that we were responsible for. But we had saved, when we created these funds in twenty-twenty, I think we had, I want to say one-point-six million dollars that were back in this fund and a separate fund. So we had about three-point-two million dollars put back in improvement funds so that we could drive the bond down that was required to do those two projects. So in the end, we had cash on hand of three-point-two-ish million. Then we had two million in a grant, so we only had the bond that remained, roughly five million dollars or four and a half million dollars.
And so whose projects are done?
The Short, the, they're both really, really close to done. I would, they'll be done before the end of the year. I think in a couple months, they'll both be completely wrapped up.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Comments?
Thank you very much, sir, and council, for letting me come up tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
That concludes it for this evening. If we have any comments or questions. That concludes for the evening. See you tomorrow at six o'clock.